As the Mayor of the Town of Clayton, I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Clayton Town Council to order. Ask you to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Most gracious and heavenly Father, we pause to give you thanks for the many blessings of this day, and we ask, Lord, now that you be with us as we proceed with the business for the Town of Clayton. For it's in Jesus' name I pray. Amen. Do we have any adjustments to the agendas?
Yes, sir. Two adjustments. We'd like to move item 11A to 4B under Administrative Items, as well as move item 9B to 4C.
All right, I have those noted. I will entertain a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
Motion to adopt the agenda as presented with those changes.
Second.
Well, a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Like son. Motion carries. Up next is your consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Well, a motion and a second to adopt the consent agenda as presented. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Like son. Motion carries. Up next will be the Clayton for You Holiday Fire Safety.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. Tonight we bring you another episode of Clayton for You. For this episode, we partnered with our fire department on holiday fire safety tips.
The holiday season is full of joy and sometimes a little chaos, but unlike everyone's favorite Christmas vacation, you can keep your decorations bright and your home safe. We'll share how in this episode of Clayton for You.
Let's start with your Christmas tree, a centerpiece of holiday cheer, but also a potential fire hazard if you're not careful. If choosing a fresh tree, make sure the needles are green and don't fall off easily. And be sure to water it regularly. Keep your tree at least three feet away from heat sources like fireplaces, space heaters, or radiators to avoid drying it out. Inspect your lights for broken bulbs or frayed wires. Avoid overloading power strips or extension cords to prevent electrical hazards. When decorating outside, select lights rated for outdoors use and keep all electrical connections dry. Don't forget to turn off decorations when you go to bed or set a schedule using a timer. And if you use candles, keep them three feet away from anything flammable and make sure they're fully extinguished before you leave the room.
By following these simple steps, you can keep your holidays merry and bright.
Thank you. Up next will be the Enterprise Resource Planning, the EPR system.
Good evening, Mayor, Town Council, Town Manager, Town Attorney. My name is Sean Mizell. I'm the Procurement Contracts and MWBE Manager here at the town, and I come here tonight to provide a little insight on the RFP process that the town undertook to select the consultant for the ERP RFP project that we have coming up. The consultant is going to assist us with developing an RFP for this project. They're also going to help us through the vendor selection, the evaluation, developing the contract, and then they are going to begin the implementation process that comes after we make the selection of this vendor. So first of all, I wanted to go over a little bit about the purpose and initiative of the project that we're undertaking here. As we all know, or we may not know, we've had our ERP system since July 2008. So it is going to be over 17, or it is over 17 years old at this time. So that's a pretty long life for an ERP system. There's been a lot of updates to these systems. There's been a lot of advances and things, you know, the way they do things, the reports they can generate, the information they can provide to help us here at the town. So we felt during our town strategic modernization efforts that it was important that we move forward with upgrading our system here at the town. The new ERP system will be essential to us for improving efficiency. Big thing here is transparency and service delivery across all of our departments. The goal is to streamline operations, enhance the data accuracy, and support better decision-making townwide. This is very important for procurement especially because we'll be able to run reports on different goods and apparatus we may be purchasing to help us go out and do bids and get better pricing for the town, therefore helping us be good stewards of the town's money and to our town, you know, citizens. The next thing I'd like to say is to begin this process, the town developed a formal RFP process for the consulting services. And like I said, they will help us with vendor selection. They will help us develop this RFP, and then they will also help us with the implementation. So a little bit about the RFP process overview, I just wanted to say first of all, that in my second bullet there, we actually, well, I will say, we actually did post publicly on the NCEVP website. So we were very transparent with this, and it was put out for all vendors who were registered with the NCEVP website with the state. We did that back in May of 2025. We advertised according to the town and state procurement requirements, but let me say, the general statutes are silent when it comes to services other than the professional services. So when I say that, the town did its due diligence in following our policy and procedures to go out and put this out on a RFP for solicitation. We did not have to do that. We could have selected a vendor. We could have gone forward and selected any one of these vendors to do this. We put it out for solicitation and we evaluated, and I'll go over that in just a minute. We did an evaluation, and this was a very long process that we went through as a town. After we advertised it, the vendors were allowed a period, it was advertised for a month. The vendors were allowed a period for question and answer process. That was like two weeks after we solicited. They had two weeks to provide us with any questions they had about this RFP. We then got together as staff and we answered the questions, and we put those addendums out on the NCEVP website for all vendors again to have, and we made sure the vendors who we had received the questions from also received those. As it says, the addendum was posted on the NCEVP website, showing our transparency and showing that we were providing open competition. The proposal due date, all proposals were required, excuse me, required to be submitted by the stated due date and time, which is required in an RFP. Any late submissions were not accepted in accordance with NC general statutes. As far as bidding, we did not receive any late bids. Proposals, once we received those by email, we are allowed to do that with services, unlike bids. They were compiled, and I sent those out to staff for all of us to read. We read 20 proposals. So we read all of those, and then we evaluated, provided score sheets, and then we went through that process. So as I said, the town received 20 proposals. I've done this RFP twice at the City of Raleigh and at the Town of Cary. I've never received 20 proposals for this. That was a lot of consultants, and I think anyone here that was on our committee will say we had quite a few. There were a lot of qualified consultants on this that submitted proposals. They were very highly qualified. The evaluation committee consisted of representatives across the town leadership. We reviewed, and then we scored based on experience, based on the project approach, based on the value, meaning the pricing that they provided, and how it aligned with our town needs. Which vendor would be best aligned with our town needs. After the initial scoring, the team selected their top three firms to participate in interviews. These were in-person interviews that were conducted, and they provided, you know, they came in and gave us, you know, a demonstration and talked about how they were, their project approach, and we went through that process. To ensure fairness and objectivity, the final selection of this, we put, sent out a Survey Monkey survey for the committee members to vote so that we would allow one last time for everyone to make a decision, and it didn't sound like it was, you know, impartial or unfair to one of the vendors. So with that being said, the town staff chose Barry Dunn was selected as the top-ranked firm based on all of those qualifications. They presented their approach and credentials at the November 10 council retreat. So all of y'all saw Barry Dunn on the team's meeting. They presented their presentation. So tonight, after council approval and delegation of authority to the town manager to execute the contract, which was done on the consent agenda, we're now moving into the final phase of contract negotiations, which we're working on now, which will position us to begin project planning and kickoff once this agreement is executed. I just want to say to all the staff who participated on our evaluation committee, y'all all did a great job. That was a lot to read, 20 separate proposals, and they were like 28 pages long. And then to score those, make scoring recommendations, we all had scoring. They turned those in, you know, I calculated the final scorings. We met again. So there was a lot of work done there, and I think, you know, we've been very transparent with the way we did this. We were very transparent with the solicitation. I've actually had other municipalities who have reached out for our RFP and have also gone on to the EVP to retrieve our RFP because they saw how good it was, you know, what a good job we did in putting that together. So I did want to throw that out there. Another thing is doing it this way, like I said, we could have chosen just any vendor. We could have picked a vendor, but going this route and selecting a consultant, the town has probably saved ourself money because there's been other municipalities who did not go out and get a consultant, but just use one of the ERPs that may be on one of the contracts, and then they've had to spend more money to bring a consultant in after the fact and to be able to get that, you know, bring things up to speed. They found they were running into problems at that time. So that's all I have right now. I think we're all very excited to get, begin work with Barry Dunn. I think that's going to begin in January after the new year, but the project duration should take us about a year. It can go anywhere between 10 months and a year, we were told. So there are milestones in that during that time that we will be meeting. And there will be multiple meetings with them. We'll have staff meeting, working meetings with them. And so if we need to report back to council, we will at that time.
Okay. Awesome. Questions or comments?
Just a comment to thank you all so much for, you really put a lot of effort into how you did this, and I appreciate the fact that you're doing this work and doing it right up front to save just kind of costly mistake the waste on the backend. So I just wanted to say thank you for that.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Thank you all. Appreciate it.
Up next on the agenda is the Advisory Board Appointments.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We began the process to fill our advisory board vacancies, which we had 29 in September, by accepting applications for all advisory boards over a one-month period. A total of 89 applications were received, and we continue to see this number grow each year. We appreciate all the citizens who take the time to apply and express interest in serving their community. All applications were reviewed by each board's council liaison who selected candidates to interview. Interviews were conducted by a combination of staff, board chair, town clerk, and council liaisons. After more than eight hours of interviews, recommendations for appointment were finalized. These recommended names were presented to council for discussion, excuse me, at the November 3 work session. And here are the names for recommendation. Board of Adjustment, Rebecca Berry, Marty Bizzle, Robin Jarvey, excuse me, DDA, Emma Lowery, Julie Miller, Angie Stokes, Kelsey Lemon, Jacqueline Finn, Sally Schwinnlin. Fire Advisory Board, Jason Thompson, Joel Gates. Library Advisory Board, Lucy Bonacci, Jill King, Patrice Hardy, and Christine Jernigan. Planning Board, Derek Applewhite, Jody Dupree, and Alexander Pilkington. Public Art Advisory Board, Mariana Amaro, Natasha Ellis Smith, Tamara Smallwood, Dylan Parton, Jess Stambaugh, Latonya Inyung. And Parks and Rec Advisory Board, Derek Kaminsky, Chris Duddy, Adrian Varangi, Bradley Shepherd, and Morgan Jones. These terms will begin January 1 with most filling a three-year term, and those that are filling an unexpired term will be notified. And tonight's request is for approval of these recommended names.
Okay. Awesome. Thank you so much. Any questions or comments? A lot of work goes into the development of all of our town boards, and we appreciate that. And too, very happy to see so many applications coming in for participation. We do.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make the motion that we approve these candidates.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for the approval of the appointments to the advisory boards. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed? Like son. Motion carries. Thank you, Heidi. Up next under Public Hearings is the 2023-32 ANX Truckslar Property Annexation.
Good evening, Mayor, Council members. My name is Audrey Duchesne, and I'm the senior planner here for the Town of Clayton. Before starting the presentation, I am requesting to present items 6A to 60 on tonight's agenda in one presentation. This way, we're still having four public hearings, four motions, but it's just to avoid redundancy and since they're all linked.
All right, Council, are you good with that? Thank you.
Thank you. So today we have a, a full annexation petition requested. They are non-contiguous, in other word, also satellite annexations for approximately 466 acres of land currently located in Johnson County to receive town services. So these lots are not in Clayton ETJ. They're in Johnson County. And so for, before tonight's public hearing, there's been the resolution for sufficiency and setting of public hearing on November 3, November 5 was the publication of the legal ad, all in accordance to the general statute. So the first annexation petition is the number 2023-32-ANX, the Truckslar Annexation. This one is located on Cornwallis Road on the western side of this road, and is currently zone AR, which is agricultural. This is a zoning of Johnson County, not the Town of Clayton. If you're looking at the map on the top, the yellow color indicates the corporate limits of the Town of Clayton. And if you're looking still at the same map, the black line around represents the Town Planner Rediction, which also include the ETJ. And so all annexation presented today will be on the western part, as you can see with the blue, I think I can point with this thing here. Yes, so the blue here. So this parcel is approximately 225 acres. Second lot with the correspondent number 2023-33-ANX, the Jurgen Annexation. On the east side of Cornwallis Road, this one is also approximately 225 acres and is currently zone AR per Johnson County zoning. The Kenny Ford Annexation with the number 2023-34-ANX is located near the intersection with Veterans Boulevard and Cornwallis Road. This one is split zone, so you have a small part which is AR, but also a part where is GP for general business. And it's approximately 22 acres. Last one, the smallest lot, is approximately three acres and is also AR zoning, located on Cornwallis Road, is borders Truckslar Annexation property. For your information, these annexation, these laws also are included in our Gateway 42 smaller area plan that was adopted by Town Council on March 18, 2024. We can then say that these annexation aligns with the adopted plan policy and long-term goals of the town. Some consideration and recommendations for tonight, these annexation were reviewed by the Town Technical Review Committee. And if you're looking at the second point here, this is a list of who reviewed this annexation request. So the fire department, police, water, and sewer all review that feasibility of providing the town services to these parcels. The general statutes allow satellite annexation of land outside town ETJ. This one is located below three miles from the corporate limits of the town, which is the case. Staff recommends approval with the effective date of February 16, 2026. The reason is that, for the, for the general statute, there's a 60 days after the effective date that we need to rezone the property. And so to allow not only the applicant to submit their application for rezoning, but also to allow staff to review and to go through the legislative process, it was discussed that February 16, 2026 was going, the clock would start at the effective date and would then let everyone do diligence. So here tonight we have police, fire, water, sewer with us, as well as me for any general statute question. We also have presentation from the applicant tonight, and I also have a request for you, a second one, and it's to hold the action on this item to, after hearing item 9B on this agenda. So after hearing the bulk water sewer agreement with Johnson County, if that's okay with council.
Did you say hold action on this item until item what? Which item?
9A, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Wanted to confirm. Appreciate that.
No problem. No problem.
Ms. Casey.
Hey, thank you for the presentation. One of the questions I had, obviously, I know we're looking at providing police and fire. I know that Cleveland Fire Department has a station out there and also know that we are proposing a new public safety complex off of the kind of intersection of Amelia Church Road, Short Johnson Road. Could we just talk about, I want to get an understanding on the fire aspect of that and how we're going to be able to serve that out there. I'm sure it's through some sort of joint agreement with Cleveland Fire Department, but I think I'd like to hear from staff.
Yeah, so for the, excuse me, for the properties in question, currently Cleveland Fire Department does have, is within their fire district. By annexing it, we would be obligated to respond. We've had conversations with Cleveland Fire Department regarding having to serve these properties. Currently, they're undeveloped, so in the near term, there's not really a lot of demand. As part of the conversations when we cited the Southwest Public Safety Center on Veterans Parkway, the analysis that was done by the consultant at the time took into account the potential for our service or response area to be as far out as that Cornwallis and Veterans Parkway intersection. So that is why the property was picked. At the current time, based on conversations with the developer, that property, or excuse me, that new facility would be up and running prior to any actual development activity on these parcels being, you know, vertical construction happening. So we would be able to respond from there for both police and fire within our response time requirements. So near term, if we had to have a conversation, or if, near term, if there was a need to cover that area, Cleveland, we could have a conversation with Cleveland to work that out. The chiefs have discussed that. And long term, we would respond from our station on Veterans Parkway.
Okay, thank you. So basically, my understanding is if they have any, break any ground out there, have something complete. Our Public Safety Center should be already.
Yeah, I'll defer to the applicant on that specifically, but my understanding is the earliest, based on going through rezoning and all of our different development approvals, as well as their timelines for things. It would be late '29, early 2030 before there was any actual vertical, any actual buildings or structures that needed to be covered. And right now, our Public Safety Center is slated to be open in 2028.
Thank you.
Yep, if I can add to this, there's also Mr. Chief Stevenson to answer a question about fire department.
Any other questions for staff, Ms. Archer?
Thank you. This question pertains to the fact that it's a satellite annexation and outside of the corporate limits, as well as outside of the ETJ. It was my understanding that part of that was in recent years, kind of a county-wide push to concentrate more residential development in, toward municipalities. Is that, is that correct on my part, and is that factoring into this particular application?
Can you repeat your question?
I think I understand. So I actually, I have a small presentation I can do for you guys if you want to get some background of kind of the project as we've, as these properties, I guess, in general, as we've known them and kind of some of the decisions that have been made along the way to be able to set up this conversation for tonight, if you don't mind.
Sure, yeah.
Do that now. That might answer a few of the questions you guys have up front.
That'd be fine.
I think the applicant has also a presentation for tonight that might answer a lot of questions.
All right, I'm going to try to run through some of the questions that I know popped up here over the last couple of weeks regarding these properties and hopefully answer some of the, some of the questions and concerns from both you all at the elected body, as well as some of the public. So a little bit of background on the property. So these properties, several of these properties, not every single one did go to Johnston County in 2020 requesting annexation, excuse me, rezoning. At the time, the county denied that, however, based on their existing services and the demands that it would put on it, as well as the continuation of what they perceived to be kind of suburban sprawl within the county. At the time, the property owners, and they may speak to this in their presentation, the property owners were encouraged to come work with the Town of Clayton in order to annex and get access to all of those core services that we would provide, fire, police, water, sewer, parks and rec, those kind of things. That is a part of a larger strategy that the county did formally memorialize in their comprehensive plan in 2023. I think it was item four of their main points moving forward, with essentially looking to drive any development, particularly density or residential development towards the municipalities, since theoretically, we should be more better suited in order to be able to serve those future residents or businesses based on our ability and, you know, the services we provide. Since that time, there's been a lot of conversations in order to be able to figure out a path forward in, in order to be able to say yes if you chose to. So the town, the county, and the property owners have been working together over the last several years to identify what those potential hurdles were and then develop plans or a game plan in order to deliver it. With regards to the infrastructure and services, again, that item 9A that Audrey was mentioning, that kind of is the negotiated result of a lot of the conversations specific to these properties. Effectively, with that, the town will be able to utilize some of the existing county infrastructure in that area to provide bulk service. That will also allow us to utilize some of the available capacity that we have with Johnston County after the Sam Branch Water Reclamation Facility opens later next year. In addition, we have worked with the Copper District. As you see, there's construction activity going on right now. We have a new 1 million gallon elevated storage tank that's going to be located approximately in the center of the Copper District property. That, that water tank will not only be able to provide fire flow and water pressure, but also allows us to install a base station to be able to read our smart meters so that we can reach all the way out to Copper District, excuse me, all the way out to the Cornwallis Road properties. On the fire and police, kind of mentioned that a few minutes ago. As we started looking at where we had to cite our station, we gave the parameter that we could have to respond as far out as the Cornwallis Road intersection. As part of that, the consultant came back with, you need to have a station somewhere between Amelia Church and Guy Road. Ultimately, that resulted in the purchase of the 8 acres on Veterans Parkway, 1609 Veterans Parkway that we now call Southwest Public Safety Center. That project is underway. I believe you've all seen some schematics and renderings of the future station. As of right now, on the current schedule, that would put that schedule, that that fire slash police station opening sometime in 20, calendar year 2028. So that would cover our fire and police response to that area. As a point of mat, in talking to the county, from the sheriff's response time to that area, countywide, the average response time is approximately 12 minutes. In talking to our police department, if we did not have the Southwest Station from our law enforcement center here in downtown out to that area, it would be approximately a 10-minute response. When the Public Safety Center is opened, it'll be down to approximately, I believe, 4 minutes. So again, improved response time to that area. On the fire side, similar kind of analysis was done when we cited the facility, or excuse me, cited the new facility. So in talking to Chief Rains, once that new facility is open, servicing these properties within the 5-minute, 5-minute, 5-mile, 5-minute, excuse me, servicing them is well within our parameters from that property. With regard to transportation, in addition to what, you know, again, tonight, all you are considering is whether or not these properties should be added into the corporate limits of the town. You are not making a decision in terms of what the actual final land use of the properties would be. However, from a transportation perspective, whatever those final uses are, they will go through the same property, excuse me, the same entitlement process that all other property in town does. So if there is any traffic impacts that are required to be mitigated, that will be obligated as part of that project, their projects. But in a grander scale, from a transportation standpoint, NCDOT Project R3410 that is funded in the STIP, we've had several conversations about that over the years. That one's kind of been two steps forward, one step back. It's been moved around. However, we've been guaranteed, I say guaranteed, we've been confirmed that that project is on a timeline where right-of-way acquisition would begin in federal fiscal year 2027, with construction starting in 2031. So again, depending upon the developer's timelines, much of that project will be, or this, that project will be underway, hopefully, and right-of-way acquired. And so if there's any initial transportation improvements they need to do, if their development precedes that, then they would be obligated to do those as well. So ultimately, that, that project would end up with a four-lane section all the way from right here at what is now 70 or Clayton Boulevard and Lombard Street. Well, and Veterans Parkway, excuse me, trying to get my, my streets right. Basically, Cleveland, excuse me, Clayton Boulevard and Veterans Parkway, all the way out to the county line, would be a four-lane median divided cross-section for the road. So again, a lot more capacity available when that project is completed. Larger goals with this from efficiency and future planning. We can have quicker response out to that area, whether it be police and fire, like I mentioned, or even on the water and sewer perspective, considering where the county has to respond to if there's a water leak or water main break. It's also from a residence perspective, rather than have folks that might live out in that area, have to travel all the way to Smithfield to do things like pull a permit or pay a water bill. They'll be able to come here to town, a much closer ride. And then integrating, once we have that finalized, being able to integrate any additional road or utility improvements that are necessary, whether it be in conjunction with NCDOT or with the county, will be a lot better for us in the long term from a sustainability of our services standpoint. From an economic and community development, community impact, it does broaden our tax base, extends the revenue and helps stabilize taxes. It attract, potential to attract business jobs, as well as provide housing for workers here in the town. As you're aware, the Copper District is now moving forward. Delayed through this COVID and whatnot, but as that continues to grow in that area, this, this, this location looks to be a good complement to it. Ensure smart growth, that area being on the edge of our town, making sure that they're following the same standards and doing things sustainably. Unified land use from that perspective as well, and they also will have access to some enhanced amenities. We did purchase parkland at Corporate Road that I'll show here on a map in a minute, as well as additional recreation and shopping that would be available here in town. And then from environmental stewardship, all of our environmental programs would be applicable to any development of these properties. Many, you know, from a clear governance, other strategic advantages, from a clear governance perspective, many of the properties between Cornwallis Road back to town here actually have a Clayton address. And so there can sometimes be a little bit of a misconception about whether they're town, town properties or not. It allows us to future-proof our growth, be proactive in kind of how that corridor grows as well. It is in alignment with the town vision that I believe was mentioned earlier, based on the small area plan that took this area into account. And then overall, these folks are going to be part of the community one way or another, whatever gets developed out there. So trying to make sure that they're tied in with the town as well. On the map that you can see in front of you here, in the lower left, is the properties in question that have requested annexation. You can see kind of highlighted along Veterans Parkway there. That's the section of road that would be four-laned in the future as part of that STIP project. So from a transportation spec, or from a transportation perspective, we have taken that into account. Again, any transportation improvements along Cornwallis Road or any initial traffic impact augmentation would be done as part of the development process. The green kind in the lower middle, that is the property at the end of Corporate Road and Jack Road that was purchased to secure future parkland in both passive and active recreation. As you can see, if these parcels were annexed and became part of the town, they would have access to some of those amenities relatively close, relatively close to where they're located. A few other items I want to mention, the kind of red hashed area, kind of center of the map, that is the location of the Southwest Public Safety Center. So you can see, it's a straight shot down Veterans Parkway out to the Cornwallis Road area. If there's a response required from either police or fire, plans are already in place to be able to staff those, both from a, both from a, excuse me, run those stations both from a staffing and an apparatus perspective. Should note also, from a policing perspective, right now, this area would fall into, I think it's control zone 4. If there was ever a response from that zone currently, it's about a 4-minute response to this area. Chief Tartt has mentioned that in the future, with all these, with both this station and the one on the north side along Coverbridge Road, there may be an opportunity to re, either add or reconfigure some of the zones as well to be able to get better response in general. But that's once the stations are open. Very small in the middle of the map, kind of with the brown in the area, the interchange with I-42 across from the hospital. You can see a little blue hatch. That is the future elevated water tank. So you can see where that would provide service, as well as be able to have connectivity for a water meter system. And then coming back to town, a couple of stats just to throw at you. From the Lombard and Main intersection out here to Cornwallis Road, the distance is, I left my folder up there, sorry. I believe the distance from Main and Lombard out to the Cornwallis and Veterans Parkway intersection is approximately 5 and 1/2, or 5.15 miles. As a matter of context, if you took from that same intersection to the end of Pritchard Road at the county line, where we still, we also have land currently annexed, used to be the Riverwalk Project, that's approximately 6.6 miles. If you head out east towards Vincent's, Vincent Road in the backside of Glenmore, again, it's approximately 6 and 1/2 miles from that point to the outer edge of what is currently annexed as Town of Clayton. So from a contextual standpoint, that kind of puts us kind of 5 and 1/2 to 6 miles in each direction from, from that Lombard and Main Street location. I think that covers all of the main points I wanted to have here. Sorry, my numbers were on the bottom right there. Clayton Center from operations, which is shown on the map as well, that is about 3.8. So again, in terms of water, sewer, any other streets, whatever may be required as part of that future development, we are very, very accessible from town perspective. And then you have some of those mileage markers right there, 2.7 miles to the Public Safety Center and approximately 2.2 miles to the hospital. So just real quick in summary, don't want to let, don't want the general public or anybody to think that the item in front of you, we haven't put a lot of forethought into how we could potentially serve all these properties if they were to be annexed. We have a plans that can be enacted should you choose to move forward with the annexations as presented. Annexation in general, as you all are aware, you know, enhances our, strengthens our economy, enhances our community with amenities, and ensures responsible growth by making sure that we've got input into how, how things develop around us. And so from that perspective, we have thought about these properties, we have analyzed the properties, we have determined how we can serve them. The choice is yours moving forward at that point. So if you have any additional questions, happy to answer them. Or we can move on and to allow the applicant to do their presentation. And I may have probably hit a couple of his points as well, assuming.
All right, any questions for staff? Mr. Sims.
Outstanding presentation. You actually stole a little bit of my thought on annexation 101 because it's definitely needed. So am I correct in saying that as a town, we're roughly around 33, 32,000, but we service around 60-something thousand? Is that correct?
Yeah, if you're taking into account all a lot of the developed subdivisions and other areas that are proximate to the town and what we see in terms of usership at our parks and folks coming to our downtown, that broader sphere is approximately 60, a little over 60,000 at this point.
So it just works out. Again, annexation sometimes becomes a dirty word, but at the same time, from a mathematical standpoint, it just kind of makes sense if you wanted to continue to increase your tax base to pay for all the infrastructure and things that we request. Is that correct?
I would say that's accurate.
Thank you.
Anybody else? All right, thank you, Rich. And at this time, I will open the floor for public comment. Well, I will open the public hearing. Let's get it clear for the record. And I will call on the applicant to make a presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the Town Council. My name is Marty Bizzle with Bassacks and Kenny Engineers. And I'm here tonight representing all four of these properties. So hopefully, we can condense this down. And my address is 6310 Chapel Hill Road in Raleigh. Councilor Sims, I will say, Rich did an outstanding job, and he sold some here at Thunder. He stole a lot of my thunder, so. I do not want to repeat a lot of what has already been presented tonight, but I do want to run through some of the key points that we feel like are basically makes sense for these properties to be annexed into the town. are basically make sense for this properties to be annexed into the Town of Clayton. I will also say, I really appreciate staff's time. This has been a long time, and just in the presentations that you've heard, this started back in 2020, and it's been a long road, there's been a lot of numbers crunch, a lot of work between the county and the town, but very, very appreciative of the town's staff and all the time they put into this to make this a reality. So we obviously are aware of the the location, Veterans Parkway and Cornwallis Road, consisting of the four parcels that have already been mentioned. The Troxworth property, consisting of 225 acres, across the road on the east side of Cornwallis, 225 acres for the Jürgen property, the Kenny property near the intersection of Veterans Parkway and Cornwallis Road, and then a small parcel on the west side of Cornwallis Road, surrounded by the Troxworth property. I wanted to just touch on five points for us while we think this annexation makes sense for the Town of Clayton. The water availability, county has water facilities existing, there's an existing 16 inch water main within the right of way of Veterans Parkway. There's also an existing eight inch water main along Cornwallis Road. Moving into sewer, there's a 16 inch existing sewer outfall that serves the 4042 area and also runs along Swift Creek. And lastly, there's an existing pump station that was originally constructed on the Jürgen property, and that was actually in the early design, we have a lot of history with this property, the county constructed that with the intent that that pump station would one day serve these properties. Moving to my third point, it's already been mentioned that this is a part of the Gateway 42 Small Area Plan. It basically is in the the red area, and then kind of moving down to that. And there's a particular point statement that was in the plan that I thought was really, really applicable to these, these annexation requests for 40s tonight. But there is a statement in here that Gateway 42 takes a proactive approach. The plan considers forthcoming changes and gets out ahead of them, empowering the community to shape our environment in accordance with our collective vision. The plan acknowledges that the growth can be a positive fourth when it is harnessed for good and can in fact help bolster the quality of life for the whole community. I think that speaks volumes to what what the 42 Gateway Plan is about, and while we are here, it gives the Town of Clayton an opportunity to shape these properties. As always, already has been mentioned, I'm glad that my mileage works out close to what Rich had. I think he had 2.77, I had approximately 2.8 miles to the proposed Southwest Public Safety Center, which would eventually serve this. And I want to go back with what the town manager mentioned. We have looked as far as the sewer, when we would actually need sewer, if this is approved, if a development plan is approved, which we're only tonight presenting the annexation request, but at the very earliest, it would be 2029, possibly 2030, and these potential projects that may come forward would last into late 2030s. So we feel like, as the manager mentioned, a lot of these, this facility would would be online, as well as my last point, the widening of Veterans Parkway. And I checked today, the NC DOT is still saying initiating construction in 2031, but you can see here, these are from the public maps, public meeting maps that NC DOT presented, and it definitely extends basically from 70 Business all the way to Highway 50 west of here, has significant impact on the traffic flow once constructed, four lane median divided super street concept, return lanes, and you can see proposed improvements at that intersection north and south on Cornwallis Road. So why annex? Just to summarize these five points, water system is available, there would be no need for the town to extend water lines out to serve this property. Sewer is available, as as mentioned before, these facilities, any sewer lines that would be extended would be within the properties paid for by the property owners, but the sewer facilities are are existing and has been memorialized in the interlocal agreement that the county approved two, two weeks ago at their Board of Commissioners meeting. Obviously, is included in the Town of Clayton Gateway 42 Small Area Plan, would be served by the Southwest Public Safety Center, which should be aligned prior to these, any units coming online here. And lastly, our NC DOT improvements to Veterans Parkway to begin in 2031, and those plans definitely are already under design. So with that, I am here for questions, but respectfully ask for your approval of the annexation request before we tonight. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any questions? Mr. Casey?
Hey, Marty, how's it going? My question is, obviously, this is an annexation night, request tonight, but I assume at some point in time, this will be come to us maybe in the form of a conditional zoning with respect to the parcels.
Absolutely. The the plan, obviously, we're not assigning a zoning to the parcels tonight. We are required, staff has informed us within 60 days of the effective date of the annexation, that we would be required to have a zoning in place. We're prepared to put a placeholder zoning in place until such time that we're ready to bring a conditional zoning request with a master plan to to the council.
Okay, and you don't necessarily have to answer this, but just to put you on the spot real quick, if you were to get like places zoning category on this, what would you foresee or what would be the applicants wish?
Yeah, we we requested residential large lot, which is basically the lowest density zoning that Clayton has right now. So that's what our applications would would go in as.
Residential large lot, okay.
Right.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
So this has been noted as a public hearing. If anyone wishes to speak, please step forward and state your name for the record.
Mayor, Mayor, just a point of clarification, is this a public hearing on all four items as well?
Yes, I thought we're doing the whole bot, the whole batch. Yes, so on any of these annexation requests, yes, ma'am?
My name is Ann Hemingway-Foyer, and I live really close to where all this is being done. However, it's not inside the Town of Clayton, so we haven't been able to vote on any of this, and this is the first I'm hearing about it. My biggest question is, did he say four lanes in each way on Veterans Parkway? Because it's a little bitty road right now.
So so the four total lanes, two in each direction with a median in the middle?
Two in each direction, okay. Well, that's better. But White Oak is a much bigger road that has a great big shopping center on it, and it's not that wide. It's one lane in each direction. So that's my question.
So that is, that is a DOT driven project. It's part of their State Transportation Improvement Plan, STIP, there we go. It has been in there for several years, I've been here since 2017, and I know it was in there before I did, before I came, so it is part of DOT's larger plan, I guess, in order to be able to provide total access in this area, but they are proposing the four lane total, two in each direction, median divided road. As the applicant mentioned, it's a super street, a lot of turn, U-turns.
Okay, I agree that near the hospital district, it's a really great idea to have two lanes in each direction, but there are some places, like there's a little bridge near the street that I am on, which is Austin Pond Road, and that little bridge is never going to get widened that way unless a lot of houses are confiscated or something.
Yeah, so that, again, the total project would actually go from Clayton Boulevard, 70 Business for those that still want to call it that, all the way out to the county line, so that would be a four lane road, two in each direction from basically the center of the town here, all the way out to the county line. Any improvements that were required to bridges or any widen, you know, to to be able to support the widening, that would be incorporated into their overall project. So I have not seen the most recent design plans, but I would believe they're identified what properties would be impacted, and based on the current schedule, federal fiscal year 27, so October 1 of 26, they would start contacting property owners to acquire land.
I'm just trying to think through how my grandsons are going to get to elementary school, but, okay. And then my next question is, is there any hope of ever getting a bike lane? Because when I moved here, it's only about two and a half years ago from Florida, and I was hoping people would be able to ride bikes around. It seems like a sleepy neighborhood, but I guess if it's going to be a major superhighway, forget that.
So I would say, I have not seen the most recent version of the plans, and I don't know if the applicant's more versed in them than I am, to be able to tell you whether or not a turn, I don't believe a bike lane, a dedicated bike lane is incorporated into their overall cross section. I do know from the town's perspective that we have advocated to be able to have a multi-use path on at least one side, so an either eight or 10 foot wide path. However, I'd have to go back and look and see what the the current proposal is based on the most recent designs.
Okay, that would be my vote.
Thank you.
Good evening, Diane Rothwell, I currently relocated here from up north, beautiful little town, and I fell in love with it for the past 20 months. And up north, I see a lot of this development going on and possibly residential development. How is this going to impact the schools if it's going to be earmarked for some residential? How is this going to be, impact the fire department? I understand that there is a fire department near the facility, but if you're adding more residential properties, you're going to need more firemen, you're going to need more policemen, you're going to need more schools. I currently live off 42, and with all the development that's going there, a two lane highway was in place, and one of the reasons why I'm coming here, besides this, but two lanes, with all the accidents that I've seen near my community, it gets bottlenecked, it gets congested, where I've seen the fire department, which is only an eighth of a mile from my community, have difficulty getting two fire trucks down there to McKenzie Ridge. So two lanes, I I've traveled that Veterans Way a couple of times, not many, as I'm still getting used to the area, but it it just seems to be a little bit more a dream to say, oh, well, you know what, it's going to be widened to two lanes, the fire department's only of, you know, a little way. And the proposed residential idea, is the development going to be home ownership or is it going to be rental? How is that going to impact the residents of Clayton in regards to their taxes, especially for the residents that are on a fixed income, retired, and, you know, and for rentals, the development, is that going to be a tax abatement where the developers are not going to need to pay the taxes upfront? They're going to be on hold for a certain amount of time in terms, where the fall of the expenses are going to fall onto the the residents that are renting. So I, it's a beautiful little community, it's a lot of property, 700 acres, and and I I just hope that the council is, as much as I would like to see it develop, be responsible and think about the homeowners and the residents of this township before you say, yes, let's do it. Thank you.
Okay, so don't go anywhere, because that was a lot. So many to break that down a little bit, instead of like your multiple inquiries, can we just like start with one and get you some feedback and do another one and get you some feedback? Okay, so what was your first one?
Well, my first one is, is the concern that if this is earmarked for residential property, is this going to be primary home ownership or is it going to be rental? And then with residential property, how is that going to impact the school systems within the township, the fire department? You're going to need a larger fire team and police department, even with the facility that's right down the road there, that will service that area.
Courtney Tanner, Deputy Town Manager. So we cannot legally regulate whether or not it's rental or home ownership, so that, to answer that question. At this time, no applications have actually been submitted, so I can't actually answer what they're proposing to actually build. They've only formally submitted an annexation petition. We can surmise it's potentially residential, but we don't know the answer to that question yet, unfortunately. What I can tell you is we do have a development map that tracks development applications online, so if you watch that monthly, once an application comes in, you will see something submitted, but at this time, we do know that they're going to submit a rezoning petition. There will be notices that are submit, you know, there will be postings in the ground, but it's going to be for the lowest density that we have, simply because they have to rezone it. You will want to look for the next time that happens as well, and that will give you a better answer to that question as to what they are generally going to propose at some point in the future. We just don't know at the town at this point. As for the schools, schools go through Johnson County, they don't actually come through the town, but we do provide demographic data to the school system to let them know so they can appropriately forecast. So we do work with a partnership with them so that they can, as the, you know, building permits, we do have estimates, we do provide them to them so they can appropriately help distribute the populations. I always say it's a little bit slower as it happens, but we do have that relationship and we do, you know, provide that information as soon as we have it so that we can help with the forecasting with Johnson County Public Schools. So we do that as well, to answer that question. I think that was one bucket. Trying to think of some of the other questions that are asked, asked, given another bucket of questions, and I'll try to answer those as well.
All right, so one of the things, if it is, you brought up working with Johnson County and the school, with the school system and everything, then that the developers be held responsible that in, with the proposal of just say, building 200 residential homes, whether they're rental or they're home ownership, that a school system be implemented also in that plan within that area to help gather those children there, rather than, so it's not overcrowded. You don't want, you don't want a can of sardines or, excuse my, you don't want 10 pounds of manure in a five pound bag, and then five, you know, years down the road, you're not equipped or, you know, you're scrambling. I do know and see that Clayton does have a lot of area to work with and everything, but you don't want to be there five minutes late and saying, oh, we got to build a school or we got to build, you know, a bigger, we need a bigger police department or a bigger fire department.
So under North Carolina law, we can't mandate that they reserve land or mandate that they require land to be dedicated for schools. We do have some developers in a really large, you know, thousands of acres, we do have some that will work with the school system and ask them, but it's completely voluntarily and it's up to them. But we cannot mandate that under North Carolina law. We also cannot, under North Carolina law, we don't have us considered an adequate public facilities ordinance where we can charge impact fees for for each home, charge an X amount of the impact to the school system that we can, we don't have that ability to do that as well. So a little bit different, I think you said you've moved here, so a lot of people who move here from other states are very custom when you purchase a new house, that you have X fee that goes to the school system, X fee that goes to roads. We don't necessarily have that luxury here in North Carolina. I will say some jurisdictions have some impact feasibility, but when it comes to schools... have some impact feasibility, but when it comes to schools, I personally don't know of anybody that has the ability to charge for schools.
Um, in the proposal of widening, um, Veterans Parkway, um, like I said, I live on 42, and it was widened to two lanes, four lanes, two lanes on each side. Um, in recent months, in the past 20 months that I've relocated there, there have been several accidents. And, um, I think it should be considered that Veterans Parkway or Veterans Way be considered to have a little bit more space so that in case of an emergency, especially if that's going to be a high-volume residential area, that there be a specific lane for emergency services. Because, um, two miles or 5.1 miles, um, can take a, an emergency vehicle quite a bit a long time to get through, especially at 4:30, 5 o'clock at night, if there's a school event going on, um, if it's the holidays, uh, if the weather's really bad. Um, can, I've been here through one snowstorm, um, down here and it shut the whole area down, and I was like, are you kidding me? Um, and I was out running out. Um, you know, if it can be widened a little bit more, especially specifically used for, um, emergency vehicles that, if this is what you're gonna, if you're planning on going through.
So, so I'll try to address that slightly. Um, currently, that is not in the plans for the overall cross section for the road, for the design. Um, as was mentioned earlier, Super Street is kind of the name, uh, a lot of people have used in the past. It's, uh, currently DOT tries to, uh, refer to it as a reduced conflict intersection design, so an RCI. Effectively, in the design, they're trying to eliminate as many potential crash points, uh, by basically requiring U-turns. Um, the data says that it works. If you've ever been to Holly Springs on Highway 55 at all, um, just west of us here, um, that one's been in place for probably about better part of 10 years now, uh, and they have seen some, uh, some improvement in terms of the overall crash data along that stretch, even with the increased traffic. So, uh, that is kind of the, the style of design that they're moving for. I will say also that we have had several conversations with the DOT, but specific to our sites at least, with regards to the Public Safety Center, to ensure that , uh, not only do we have access to be able to head west on Veterans Parkway, but also, um, be able to use preemption, which is essentially being able to tell the signals along that corridor to go green or red in whichever direction is necessary so that the emergency services can get a clear pathway to wherever the response, uh, they're going. So, uh, all of that has been well received from DOT's perspective. It is not uncommon for them to work with us on that. Uh, and so, uh, in the long term, uh, even though it's only going to be four lanes, two lanes in each direction, um, not dedicated from emergency management, but it will definitely be incorporated into the overall design, both, um, from the town's perspective and the DOT. So, um, that's, that's kind of how it operates down here. I'm not sure exactly where you're from, but, um, that is, uh, kind of the, the way things, uh, operate down here currently. Um, there was one other question that you had, um, I think we got school.
Who was pretending to, uh, police and fire expansion?
So police and fire expansion. From the town's perspective, uh, and this council's been working very diligently here over the last few years, uh, we've had several studies done, both police and fire, uh, to be able to help us up a site, locations for future stations. On the, on the fire side, I think it had eight total, um, looking at Chad, but I mean, 10, excuse me, total stations. That's a kind of a 20-50-year horizon, so, um, we're not jumping, don't worry, we're still only talking about the two that we've been talking about here. Uh, but based on the growth patterns, we currently have, the council's already acquired, uh, property, both on Veterans Parkway, uh, at the location we're talking here, as well as on the north side of town. As part of that, the fire department and the police department have both developed plans in order to be able to be prepared so that when those stations, basically when we get the certificate of occupancy, we have staff that have already been brought online, trained up, we purchase the apparatus or the vehicles or whatever we need from a patrol perspective, uh, so that day one, we can go ahead and operate out of those stations, uh, and be able to serve, better serve the community in those areas. And so, a lot of planning has gone into effect with those master plans and those other, other analyses. Uh, this council's been, uh, part of those conversations to understand what those commitments mean, because when you say you're going to build a new fire or police station, you're not just, you're not just committing to the brick and mortar, you're committing to the people, to the, to the cars, to the equipment, all of that. So, all that's been taken into account with our, uh, our budget manager and, and kind of analyzing those, when those stations come on and what those, uh, uh, costs essentially will be. So, uh, I can say from the town's perspective, we have worked very hard over the last few years to be in a position to know what we need and when we need it to be able to better serve the community overall as we grow. So, uh, that's our game plan as of right now, uh, always subject to, um, you know, council input and/or adjustments. But, uh, as of right now, for this particular area, uh, the part of lands purchased, that the project's underway, design has happened, um, current, uh, anticipated opening would be 2028, and that would be with, um, I'm going to look at Chad, but I don't know if, uh, the chief over there, uh, two companies, or, excuse me, two companies, I believe, on the fire side, as well as, uh, dedicated police staff and patrol zones based out of that substation location. So, um, we feel pretty confident that we'll be able to, to serve this area, uh, from a police and fire perspective.
Thank you.
My name's Scott Low. I live in the neighboring property to the Yurgen. We're butt up to it. A quick question. Um, this property was denied, from what I understand, back in '20 from Johnston County due to traffic count, the overcrowding of the schools, and, um, public safety, which you're already addressing. Uh, DOT count on the road, um, if that's been considered. My question is, if the county denied this, what can the town of Clayton provide as oversight to make the decision to approve this future development that the planning board of Johnston County has already denied?
Well, I mean, I can, but.
Go ahead, Mrs.
So outstanding question. So a couple of things. If you look at the fact that, um, and they, they kind of went over it, there's going to be a lot of things that's already placed in there, whether it be the extension of the, uh, the expansion of, uh, Highway 42, Veterans Parkway, those that, that wasn't in place when they, uh, considered it in, in, uh, 2020, the actual, going over as far as in the expansion, knowing that it's, that's coming to fruition. Uh, the other thing is the, um, I think which is a big one, is the public, uh, safety days as far as fire and police. I think public safety is a huge thing, and having it right there on the middle church row is going to allow for, um, a lot of things to take place as far from fire and a police aspect. As far as schools, one of the things, again, as far as it was spoken upon, um, do we look at school? I think, uh, Courtney did outstanding job. Yeah, we, we, we look at them, but that has to be considered actually by the county and by the school board. Our decision has to be based upon those parameters. There's a lot of parameters that we have to work in that the county doesn't necessarily have. So there's different ones that we have to consider when things come be, before us.
So.
Do you want to add to that?
Yeah, I think, I don't have anything to add just yet, but you were going to say something. Sorry.
So if you're going to take, the town is going to have oversight here, she already stated that this is going to be a county school issue, and we would assume Cleveland, Palenta, those are already overpopulated. The traffic congestion is already there. The congestion is already on Cornwallis Road. Is the town going to have any oversight with DOT as far as expansion on Cornwallis Road with regards to vehicular count with this proposed residential development?
So I'll, I'll try to answer that. So from a transportation impact analysis, that's what, depending on what's proposed here and, uh, our UDO, which I would feel pretty confident just based on the size and scale of the developments that are out here, a traffic impact analysis will be required. Uh, if there's any roadway improvements to be able to, uh, handle the traffic, uh, along Cornwallis or otherwise at the intersections, uh, all of that will be identified as part of that, including looking at the traffic counts, both current and growing it for future growth in the area. Uh, they will take into account the future DOT project likely as well, just to be able to see how that all plays together, to see if there's any improvements that are needed before that is in place versus once it's in, once it's built. Uh, and so that will be part of the, the analysis. Once they decide what they're going to submit from a rezoning perspective, uh, we'll be looking at what other improvements to the, to the road network will be required in that regard. Um, when, on the schools, I, I did want to mention that, uh, as part of our technical review committee process, which is what all the plans, uh, all these proposed plans go through, uh, the school system is invited to all those meetings. They are able to be able to, um, I guess get a firsthand look, uh, at what is coming down the pipe so that they can then plan for it. Uh, I can't recall, and, and, Miss Dolores, what is the name of the, uh, process or the program that they utilize to be able to, to, or, ORED, there we go, that's the word I was looking for. Uh, the county has a process through ORED, uh, where they take all these growth assumptions from the different municipalities and the county itself, uh, to be able to determine where expansion of schools are, are, are needed and on what timeline. Uh, that is something that we, in the last several years, particularly as Sam's Branch Water Recreation Facility has, uh, been coming along, uh, we've been asking all of our developers to be able to provide us build-out schedules so that we can see how that stacks together and better plan for those future needs, uh, and it, you know, basically know when those, uh, improvements need to be on time. We do provide that stuff to the school system as well so that they can understand what we're projecting in terms of our growth, uh, growth curve. Um, on the public safety, I should have also mentioned and, uh, made Chief Stevenson may have confirmed, I think it's maybe next year or the year after, the county is going to be going to a closest station response as well. Um, so from our perspective at the Public Safety Center, with Cleveland Fire Department being, um, essentially in the center of, of, of a lot of these properties being considered, um, depending upon what kind of, uh, incident it is, um, they may even be responding faster than we are. So from a protection perspective, that, that'll be there as well.
So am I to understand that the town would respond to this project on Cornwallis Road, but not come on to government route? Because I'm into ETJ.
If it's not annexed currently, however, once it goes to closest response, if we were the closer, um, station for whatever that, uh, incident is, we would be the one dispatched. So that, that is a larger countywide initiative to be able to provide better service throughout the county.
Initiative.
Yep, that'll be, again.
Yeah. So right now, the sheriff is the reaction for, for any kind of imminent danger or anything like that. So would Clayton be a first response, closest resource in that?
So, so the closest response is for the fire and emergency management, emergency services, or, excuse me, EMS. It is not, from a police perspective, uh, there's policing powers, uh, that are legally, um, a little bit more challenging from that regard. Uh, however, I will say that, um, when the sheriff calls us, we come. Um, and so from that perspective, if our station is closer, our patrol officer's closer, and there's an incident that we need to lend some help with, um, do the mutual aid, just like, uh, fire does, uh, will respond as necessary. But from, uh, general policing, uh, the annex portions of the town would receive town police response. The unannexed portions would still respond, uh, receive, uh, sheriff's response primarily.
So my original question was, the town feels, the council members here fear that y'all have better oversight and would have better control than what the county would have, being they've already denied this?
Yes.
Good. Yeah, and I want you to just keep in mind too, like, it's my personal opinion, like, um, Johnson County is really not set up to handle, uh, a strong development. So that's why they've extended the ETJ to three miles for municipalities, because we are already equipped with staffing and policy and all of that to handle that kind of volume. Johnson County is not really equipped, nor do they want to expand their operation to be able to do that. That's why they had this mindset of let's start bringing development closer to municipalities. That way we don't have to deal with it. When it comes to your concern, and I share it too, about Cornwallis Road and any road improvements that are going to be needed on that road, like I'm sure they're going to be, and I'm sure the developer and the town and NC DOT are going to figure out what they are. Uh, and I'm real, I'm go ahead and put it out there for the record, that I'm going to be looking for, uh, developers to help offset a lot of that cost, if not all. Right? So, and that's going to be for turning lanes and, and how many cars can back up in a queue and, and the whole nine yards, right?
So the UDOs are going to extend into the, to that corridor of this development
And we're kicking it to Deputy Manager Tanner to make sure I don't say something wrong, but from a, from a, for the annex portions and the frontages, yes.
Yes.
As it is right now, if you're into ETJ, you got to follow the set, UDOs?
So as it is now, the answer to your question is no. If somebody walked in today to put in anything, they would have to go to the county. Once it's annexed and you have the effective day of the annexation and it's rezoned, you have to have really kind of both parts. The answer to your question is yes. You have to rezone it and you have to annex it. It, the, our UDO here in the town would be in effect. You have to have both those pieces.
So the UDO would follow suit into the annexed area?
Once we rezone.
Once it's rezone.
Once it's rezone, yes, sir.
And just to clarify, because, because this area is not technically within our ETJ, so just the properties that are annexed would be subject to our UDO at that point. The other properties that may be already currently developed in the county or are not developed and just not annexed yet, those would not fall.
Just because we're inside of it, between there and the city limits.
Doesn't apply to you. Yeah, your house would remain in the county. You would have to.
We got farmland and everything.
Yeah, you would have to physically go through this same process unless, and there is no plan to expand ETJ. You would have to go through the same exact process.
Volunteer, right?
The ETJ, it's, it's not quite that simple, so I don't want to answer that with a yes or no. Um, but, you know, ETJ, as it's currently set now, there's no plans to revise our ETJ boundary. So if anybody that's currently in the county wanted to develop, and they're not currently in the ETJ, and they're, but they're within this three-mile boundary, they would have to go through the same exact process that this property owner is going through.
Makes sense. Okay. Thank you for your time.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Scott.
Good evening. Um, just a, really not more or less a question, but a comment. And this concerns your Southwest Public Safety Center and probably any other expansion that you're going to have, um, with the police, fire, and emergency services. Don't underbuild. Uh, I moved here 10 years ago from Branford, Connecticut, and they got caught in that. They built the firehouse in 1960, and it was a small town like Clayton was, maybe 20 years ago. In the seventies, eighties, and nineties, Branford experienced, experienced a lot of expansion like Clayton is now. All of a sudden, now the fire department was too small, and they ended up having to park the emergency response fire rescue unit outside the firehouse because they had no room. Because of environmental reasons, now they had, can, they could not store what they needed for a call for an emergency, especially a medical emergency, in the fire unit. So they had to take everything with them, all like blood plasmas, uh, you know, I see, you know, any, any drips, anything that was liquid, anything that could be environmentally affected by too much heat or too much cold in Connecticut, had to be loaded into the truck every time. Now, if you get a call for a, a heart attack, minutes come. So as you go along and you expand, not only to this one, but also I think you want to expand up to what Coverbridge Road area, don't underbuild. Think, what's it going to look like 20 years from now? What's it going to look like 30 years from now? So future generations don't get caught short.
Yeah, your point is so well taken. I'm having flashbacks to the late 1990s when we were in the original town hall building, one block down.
Yeah.
And the fire, the police department was in the basement of that building. And so, you know, we built a brand-new, two-story, beautiful building beside of that. But the building that is beside of that was actually the first building that we built. And we were so proud of ourselves because we had finally taken the police department out of the dungeon of the original town hall building and put them into a new facility.
Yeah.
That facility lasted five years. And then it was time to figure out, how do we, you know, expand the police department because we didn't build enough? And that's how we got this great big building on the corner of Barber Street and Second Street that allows us to grow and to develop into that building, saving cost because building it years ago instead of having to do additions onto it nowadays. And I think the same process is being planned with these two new public safety.
Yeah.
And I think the same process is being planned with these two new public safety centers that we are building for the future. And the design is such that it can be added on if you need additional fire bays, if you need additional police space, it can be added on. So when, when those drawings start coming public and people see what they're actually looking like, it could look like we're building Taj Mahals, but actually we're building something that allows us to grow into it, into the future because it's less expensive now than it will be in the future. So your point is well taken. Could I get you to state your name for the record?
Oh, I am so sorry. David Stamp and I live at 465 Rolling Meadows Drive.
Thank you, sir.
Can I make one comment that's not related to this, please? Save me the trouble of standing up later. This goes to the Parks and Rec Department. I live right across the street from the East Clayton Park and I would like to commend the people who maintain that park. They do an excellent job because they have a variety of things between the soccer fields that are artificial turf, real turf, acres of grass, baseball fields, walking trails, the children's park, restrooms and an 18-hole disc golf course, and I think they do a magnificent job. Please pass it on to the Parks and Recs Department and everybody that's there. Thank you very much for your.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
My name is Jason Meadows, Clayton native. Not sure there's a ton of us left. But address is 4 Kevin Branch Road. Just background, I'm a civil engineer. I have a small practice in Raleigh. We predominantly only do work in the Raleigh area. But you know, obviously being a citizen here, I need to be a little bit more responsible. I am in the ETJ, so I can't vote or pay taxes or pay for utilities that we hear a lot about. But I've never seen an annexation come as the first step in a process. So interesting to hear if that has occurred previously for our town or not.
I'll let the attorney handle that.
Yeah, I would say it's not unusual. It's actually typical.
Typical for the town of Clayton?
Well, we serve as council for a number of jurisdictions and I think it's typical, at least in eastern North Carolina.
Yes, it's atypical with my experience with the city of Raleigh. So that's, that's where I'm comparing that contrast. This seems premature in my opinion. You guys need your new Public Safety Center to be up and running. You guys need a water tower at the Copper District, which has been slow. The 42 improvements, Veterans Parkway, you know, those were supposed to start years ago. Hadn't we, if we hadn't had COVID, those would have already, you know, probably been under construction. I just, this doesn't make a lot of sense to put the annexation first. And quite frankly, we've been kind of dancing around what is going to happen here, but it's clearly laid out in your bulk water and wastewater agreement with Johnson County. This item 9A that you guys are getting ready here. There's 665 lots on the two parcels, the Trixel and the Yurgen parcels, and then the Kenny parcel has 384 apartment units proposed. Those may not be proposed officially, but that's what's in your packet for your water and wastewater agreement. So I would appreciate if we were a little bit more forthcoming about what was going to be here. And to acknowledge that the existing traffic problems that we currently have, I just, I think it's, it's a growing issue in the town, not just in this area, but elsewhere. So in general, I know, you know, there's a lot of things that need to come ahead of this development, getting its permitting in place. We know we have a rezoning coming up. We have all of your development approvals. But a satellite annexation such as this really doesn't make sense. If you guys have ever heard of Strong Towns, Strong Towns is an organization that talks about tax base and how you, as you continue to sprawl exactly in this manner, you do not ever collect enough tax base to pay for the infrastructure to support it. That's fire, police, utilities, roads, pipes, you name it. That's exactly what that organization set out to do is to educate folks that this exact scenario is a bad idea and is not fiscally responsible or could be maintained in the future. This may not be a future problem that you nor I will see, but people that come after us will have to deal with these types of things. That's all I have to say.
Thanks, sir.
My name is Dustin Carter. I live at 428 White Bark Lane. Unfortunately, I will not be as eloquent as the civil engineer, but he basically made all the same points that I was thinking. And speaking of Parks and Rec, that's pretty much where I got all of my limited government knowledge. I'm just trying to do my civil due diligence here and, you know, give some comments and feedback, which is mostly, you know, it seems like we're trying to run before we crawl. I would be concerned with any kind of cost analysis of how long it would take to regain, you know, all of the taxes to pay for all of this infrastructure. You know, we're looking at these public safety centers, firehouses, the water. Yes, these things are going to happen, but construction takes a long, long time, you know? And as the previous gentleman also eloquently said, we're kind of dancing around this. We know it's going to be rezoned as homes, you know, whether it's on paper or not, that's what's going to happen. And really that's what this annex is about. So just ask the council to keep that in mind.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? No one else wish to speak? All right. No one else wishing to speak? I'll turn it, I will close the public hearing and turn it over to council for their discussion.
Obviously, a lot going on. This has obviously got a lot of interest in the community. First, I want to say, you know, Marty and his team are the best of the best. So the applicants and even the neighbors who this is going to potentially affect, they've got, they've got a good team. Marty, I know Marty well. He, he does his due diligence. He does a great job. So, you know, if this project were to go through, please understand that obviously you got, got Marty and his team. It would be, it sounds like it would come through us with the conditional zoning too. So what that means is even if the annexation is approved tonight, you know, there's still a lot of other steps that have to be in play before anything happens out there. And there's can be feedback, doesn't have to be from somebody in the ETJ or even somebody in the municipal district. It could be from the entire, entire community and there will be meetings and everything else. So please, you know, understand that. You know, for me, this is more of a conscientious, conscious, not conscientious, a conscious like choice or decision on this. You know, I feel like there's a few things that, you know, me as a council person through our UDO, one thing in particular we could have, could have done better. You know, this is so far, I mean, this is pretty far out of our ETJ. There's only one other parcel, if I look correctly on our municipal boundary in ETJ map, was the Vincent Road property, which was approved, I think it was earlier, maybe earlier this year or so. But this is the only other parcel that'll kind of seem like it'll be outside of our ETJ. But anyway, what I was getting to is, you know, we only, the only thing I guess that was noticed was a notice in the newspaper. You know, I know in a lot of some of our other, you know, conditional zonings and stuff like that, there's something put down at the site, you know, there'll be letters sent out to the, to the rest of the community. For me, I feel like that is something that we probably need to consider as a council if we get another project like this. Because like I said, a lot of these people, you know, they may come to Clayton, but they're not as familiar with what's going on. And, you know, this is, I'm sure a surprise to a lot of them. I'm not sure how they heard about it. But anyway, I just wanted to kind of put that down for the record. Another thing I wanted to say, you know, obviously there's a lot of feedback on social media on this and I purposely ignored it. I haven't read any of it. I'll probably read it after the, the meeting tonight, but I didn't want that to influence my, my conscience on this decision. But yeah, I'm not a fan of the project, just, just to be blunt. And one of the reasons why is how far it is outside of our ETJ. Like I said, Vincent Roads is the only other project that, you know, has been approved by the town that's outside. I know it's, it's distance from downtown is comparable, but you know, it'd be nice if the Copper District was already on board, you know, we maybe had some infill in between there before going, going here. A few other things, you know, reasons behind it is, you know, you know, the DOT timelines are uncertain. So, you know, we come through this conditional zoning, I feel like we're going to need to make sure that, you know, we, you know, we make sure that this is phased properly to, you know, our public safety center, our, the DOT, you know, is able to widen 42. And then, you know, obviously the potential density on this project too, understanding it's going to be in the municipal district at this point in time, well, you know, there's going to be some more, I guess waivers on density other than, you know, if it was in the county. With that being said though, if it's our, under our control through the conditional zoning method, we will have the ability to, you know, push back on certain cases and certain situations with respect to this, with respect to this project. And then finally, you know, we just kind of ended a grueling campaign and a lot of people, a lot of feedback in the community, you know, citizens in the town, you know, are concerned about some of the rapid growth. So, I mean, those are, you know, those are my reasons. I get there's a lot of good reasons to vote for this. I know one of them would be that gentleman that presented to us earlier. So I understand that as well, but you know, in this particular case, I'm going to just float my conscience and I'm just not, not going to be a fan of it. Okay? Thank you.
I just want to get really clear. Did we meet all the laws as it pertained to advertising? Okay. Ms. Arch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I very much appreciate the public comment tonight. This is great to hear from folks and hear what people are thinking. Got a couple of phone calls as well as an email over the weekend and I just applaud you folks for coming up and being persistent and asking your questions. It's such an important part of the process. And so wanted to reiterate that, always welcome, even if we agree to disagree. I think it's really important to talk about these things. And to that end, wanted to remind everybody that all of our emails and phone numbers are published on the website. So some people found me over the weekend and I thought that was fantastic. Appreciate that. I'm just going to start off with the, the big elephant in the room, which is the satellite annexation piece. And this is just kind of a philosophical thing and, you know, I don't really see it as a black and white issue, as a firm wrong or right way to handle these things. I was on the planning board for four years, have been on council for four years. And what I have noticed is that towns grow very sloppily. They don't kind of radiate outward tidily, you know, like we would want, very clean edges and, and things like that. I wish it was a linear progression because I have that engineer brain and I want it to be neat and tidy. But if you think over time, you know, Riverwood and Glen Laurel were likely satellite annexations. And there's a lot of lovely homes in those areas and a lot of lovely people and they've absolutely integrated into our community and become a lovely part of what we are. And not to say this is an exact parallel example, but again, satellite annexations are part of that kind of sloppy, patchy growth that towns go through and with all their headaches and all that goes with that. I think what sold me on this annexation is I, and you kind of never really got to see it very well on any of the maps tonight, but if you just go to your phone or go to Google and you look at the map and you turn on the, the layer where you can see the development, you know, the actual aerial and you zoom out, these parcels are kind of in the middle of a donut of development. And, and the surrounding developed areas that are around this kind of blank spot, I really think they could have been done better if there was a more long-term plan in place for the county at that time, kind of what they're pushing now, right? They're trying to push these things into a more organized municipal pattern of development. But that's okay. We're kind of making the best of what we have here. And what you have here, if you zoom out on that map, is you have this area in the middle and then you have a whole bunch of development ringing these parcels here. So to me, when I looked at it from that kind of 10,000-foot view, this really looked like we were filling in a blank. So as one of the commenters intelligently commented, you know, let's deal with the elephant in the room. This is going to be residential development, whether the wastewater allocation was here or not, just looking at what's around this, this donut piece of land, the pattern out in this area is already residential. And so if that's what's coming for this area, then I do believe our town should annex that for all the reasons we've heard tonight. And one of the biggest reasons for me, one of the things I'm the biggest fan of is our new UDO. I think our UDO is better than the county's and I think we would get better development out here with our own code in place here. And that's going for us as a town, the people who would live there, the people who would live around it in proximity. The other thing that I'm cheerleading for here is bringing it into the town, annexing it in. As we've heard tonight, many of the people living in this area around these undeveloped parcels, they already come into Clayton. We're talking about 30,000-ish taxpayers supporting amenities for around maybe 60,000 people. And that includes splash pads, that includes our, our new library that's underway, that includes all the greenways. It even really includes events, like for example, if you think about the Christmas Village or the fireworks, for example, those are costly events to, to host. Love them. They make, they make us who we are and we, we need to have them, but they are taxpayer-funded. So when you're looking at an area that's likely already going to be residential, that's likely going to house people who are going to participate and use these amenities and these things that we have, it's, you have to look at it also from this business sense of what makes sense and how to get, you know, everything paid for and kind of taken care of and coming together collectively to do that. So those are, those were my big talking points, why I feel this annexation meets the criteria that it needs to meet for Clayton. And then all of the other topics we heard about tonight, we heard about roadways, you know, traffic, schools, you know, other things like that, wastewater, water, all of those details will come into play should this come, come before us as a conditional rezoning. And at that time, if, if you've watched council meetings over the past four years, you will see those are where we really dive in and we really try to get the very best product that we can and make sure that it's, it's the best that we can get for the town of Clayton. And, and I will stop there. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Ms. Sims?
Just real quick, I think Councilwoman Andrea really hit, hit everything that I kind of wanted to hit, but I do want to say annexation again, it sometimes becomes a dirty word, but the mayor said something to me five years ago, before I came on council and he was having a conversation with me, I'll never forget it. He said, Sims, at the end of the day, do you ever see a town that's in the middle? You said that they are either growing in or they're dying. Because my job and other things, I'm literally on the road. I've gone all over North Carolina. That has always stuck with me the four years I've been up here. Why? Because I never see a town that's in the middle. When you made that comment, I always would go through and I look at. Annexation is an important part. We came on four years ago and redid the UDO. I mean, a whole long year long, might've been longer than that dive in. I say that to say, this annexation is just a part. There's two other things that has to go along with this. This is just a part of it. Other places like Raleigh or whatever, they might do things different, but this has potentially worked for us, if anybody pays attention. There's a lot of things that have been annexed that has not come due for wishing. So to think that, you know, this, or to understand that this is just part of a process that has to, you know, take place. And I, I just wish people would note and understand the gravity of the math and it's, I'm a math person. My bachelor's degree is in aviation and I am a math guy. If this town runs off of 30,000 people, okay, and we're servicing 60,000, the math ain't working. So we have to look at things like this. There's other things also as potential ways to, to continue to take stress off of those 30, 30,000.
Yep, you're either a ghost town or a growth town. That's it. I'll, you know, this is, you know, the mayor doesn't get to vote, but here's my opinion. And I just think about Clayton's history, okay? And the very first satellite annexation in the town of Clayton was the subdivision known as. as Glen Laurel. And when that subdivision got brought to a town board, the town board, everybody was up in arms because it didn't border the town, it was way out there. We didn't know those people that were going to be living out there, they were going to come and take over the town of Clayton, all this stuff, right? And some of you in this room remember this. But look what happened. It's a wonderful community in which to live, it's a strong network inside of Glen Laurel community, they are a prime example of quality living, a place to, you know, live, work, and play. And when it got satellite and it started getting built, you know, you had to go down this two-lane road called 42 East to the first set of pine trees and make a right on that road and go down there before you even ended up at Glen Laurel. Now, if you look at it, a lot of quality development has taken place in infield where that's taken place. And I think the same is going to hold true for this tract of land, that it's very, very similar to what was Glen Laurel back in the late 1990s. Ms. Anderson?
You kind of left me out, you didn't ask me.
I'm sorry.
That's all right. And I'm not going to, I'm not going to reiterate everything that's been said here because I agree with the majority of what's been said, so I'm not going to repeat that. But I, I do want to say that this council and, has been really good at asking the hard questions of developers and saying, "Okay, tell us exactly what this is going to look like. Tell us what materials you're going to use. Tell us what this, this aesthetic is going to look like in the neighborhood. And if it doesn't meet what we think will enhance our community, it doesn't get voted on. You need to look at our history for that." The other thing is, we don't mind making the hard requests of developers in what needs to be part of the package to contribute to our community. So I think that goes a long way in hopefully maybe making people feel a little more secure with this annexation. This is not a done deal, and, and we have annexed properties that haven't been developed because the answers to the hard questions were not given. So this council is very good at asking the hard questions, in my opinion, about what comes into our community.
I agree. Anyone else?
I do.
Yes, ma'am.
I just want to say thank you for all those that presented on tonight, and we do understand the history of this situation that we have at hand. We heard your questions. By being since 2020, we, we know what you heard on tonight, and I just want to say a lot of work has been done. And based on the presentation that we've seen and observed, the question is, does it make sense to annex? And you look on the screen even now, the things that they presented to us about the water availability, the sewer, including the town gateway 42, and this goes on. So these are some of the things we want to think about. And so I just want to say one last thing from the presentation that town managers did. It says that it strengthened our economy, and that has been a concern I'm hearing all night about the increase from 30 to 60 residents here enhances our community, and this goes on. So just think about these things as well. I think we all work together, we do our research, and we definitely want the best for our town as well. It's not personal, but we want to take the facts that we have and utilize that and think about, yes, indeed, a lot of work has been done, and it shows proof from that time to now of the things they have increased and improved since that time. Those are my comments.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Anyone else? If not, if you're done with the comments on that, I think we will go to item 9A for the bulk water and wastewater agreement with Johnson County.
Good evening, Mayor, Members of Town Council, Joshua Baird, Water Resources Director. So moving to this item 9A, this item before you is a bulk water and wastewater agreement related to the annexation petitions and applications that were before you. A lot has already been hit on, so just some key elements that I'll, I'll just reiterate. Town manager spoke about its current capacities that we currently have, and as we complete Sims Branch, complete the ECIA transmission project, moving our industrial flow, which we're currently sending and utilizing available capacity with the county to, that, that will open up capacity. The agreement before you is effectively moving a portion of that existing capacity into this corridor, both existing treatment capacity as well as water capacity. There are some improvements that will be required when it comes to transmission, improvements of the town or the developer to be determined when we actually have more detailed drawings and more information in front of you. The county has approved this agreement at their last meeting in preparation for it being before you tonight. And the, the other, I'll say it's roughly about 300,000 gallons of water and wastewater is what the town would be moving from the US 70 corridor where we're currently using the ECI, moving to this, to this area. That number is based on conversations with the applicant as to future use. There are some exhibits, as has been alluded to, in the agreement. Those are for the purposes of determining where master interconnect meters and sewer monitoring measuring equipment would be installed and not binding you to any set plan or density other than general exhibits for where those tie-in locations would be to be able to provide the bulk service. So by approving the agreement tonight, you're not approving the overall density or anything related to the project. This agreement is just simply setting up the bulk service area, bulk service services in this area to be able to serve the annexations before you. So with that, certainly would recommend approval of the agreement and resolution if you were to proceed with the annexations. And reason for asking for modification here is staff would recommend having the utility service set up prior to voting and approving of the annexation, such that the utility service is set up via bulk agreement prior to actually voting in action on any annexation. So without taking any questions.
Questions or comments? Ms. Archer?
Thank you. So that last part you just said, is that, is that all covered under the adoption of the resolution? There's no any call out, any special conditions or anything extra? We can adopt the resolution and it incorporates everything you just stated?
So the action in the resolution is just specific to the agreement setting up bulk service of approximately 300,000 gallons to the area. It is completely separate from the annexation and would recommend keeping two separate actions, setting up the bulk service, and then ultimately the annexation, actually, if you decide to proceed with it.
Perfect. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else?
One thing I would follow up and clarify that Joshua was mentioning, with those improvements that are required at those future rezonings, that would be the time that we would be looking to determine what the cost that needs to be borne by the developer is to be able to make those improvements. So don't want to lose sight of that, but that is not something that would be decided tonight as part of the annexation.
Ms. Archer?
I'm prepared to make a motion.
Okay.
I would like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 2025-93.
We have a motion and a second for the adoption of Resolution Number 2025-93. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign.
No.
Motion carries.
Now that we have that part taken care of, we will go back to the four items of annexation request that are included in your agenda packet.
Mr. Mayor, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Ms. Archer?
Motion to approve Ordinance 2025-11-03. Second.
Okay.
Sorry.
You're going to do one at a time. Okay, for clarity, that's fine.
Actually, I can consult with the attorney, is it, do them individually one at a time? Okay. Thank you.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 2025-11-03. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign.
No.
Motion carries.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Ordinance 2025-11-04.
We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 2025-11-04. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Ordinance 2025-11-05.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 2025-11-05. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries.
Last but not least, I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance 2025-11-06. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 2025-11-06. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries. All right. Up next, under public hearing, is Unified Development Text, Unified Development Ordinance Text Amendment.
Good evening, Mayor, Members of Council, Conrad Almato, Planning Director. So this is the fifth round of the Unified Development Ordinance Text Amendments. That's the second one that we've had this year. The first one we had this year was approved by council on July 21st, 2025. So there are about 24, there are 24 changes made with some editorial, grammatical changes. This UDOTA has an accompanying summary table with highlighted numerical references that directly correspond to the text that is changed in the UDO itself. This item was brought before the planning board on the 27th of October, was unanimously recommended for approval. It was presented at the town council work session on November 3rd, and we're here before you tonight with the public hearing. So in brief, the UDOTA 2-25, Chapter 1, will be a quorum for items that are decided by the planning board and the Board of Adjustment. Chapter 2 touches a bit on zoning compliance permits. Chapter 3, some clarification on the naming of some zoning districts. Chapter 4 touches on some uses like flagpoles, downtown boundary map, and urban archery. Chapter 6, some, probably the biggest lift that we have for this round is regarding stormwater state compliance, and then Chapter 8 with some definitions. This is the summary table that was included in your package just for reference, so that number 2 in the summary table will align with the numerical, the number there for the red line, the deletion or the insertion of text. So going through the summary table, line item by line item, clarification on quorum for the planning board and the Board of Adjustment for them to take action on items. Number 2 is aligning the UDO with respect to playground equipment, which is now exempt from having to get a zoning compliance permit if you have the playground on a, a lot with an individual dwelling. An update on the conservation subdivision to align with the major subdivision submittals. An update to the driveway permit to be required for a street as defined in the UDO. Moving on with number 5, clarification on fences and walls and retaining walls of less than five feet in height. An update on flagpoles permitted as a zoning compliance permit. A zoning compliance permit required for the establishment of a new principal use that aligns with our change of principal use requirement. Relocation of public notice content from the UDO and placement into the UDO's procedures And that procedure manual is included in your packet as a reference, and you can see the red line text in that as well. For number 9, removal of reference to conditional zoning naming conventions. Increasing the maximum, maximum size of a building from 5,000 to 10,000 square feet in size in the neighborhood commercial zoning district. Number 11, allowance of type 3 conditional zonings to list either prohibited or permitted uses, restrictions. Number 12, a clarification of our unified development language to refer to principal Moving on to number 13, update to the downtown, downtown boundary map reference that was approved in the Clayton, in the downtown Clayton Plan in our UDO. And urban archery, I added this graphic in here to articulate some of the, the changes that we did here. So clarification that 50-yard provision from a dwelling of urban archery, so this was brought up by citizen. The existing UDO, if there's a, a, what's it called, combination of parcels that are allowing hunting to occur, the UDO is a little bit, let me see if I can... So if you have hunter property 3, 1, 2, and 3, the UDO would not allow hunting to occur within 50 yards of the dwelling. So if all three property owners are allowing hunting on their property in this case, and they're combining their properties, then hunting, that 50-yard provision is not applicable. So this clarification addresses that issue. Moving on with clarification of required maintenance easements for retaining walls five feet or higher. Revision of structural soil to be supportive soil and is further defined and articulated where that would be required in the UDO. Clarification on street trees, streetscape buffers, and where and how many trees are required under each type of buffer. The removal of tree species for street trees from the UDO and placing them into the UDO procedures manual with, in the context of the veget, recommended vegetation plant list. The bigger, the bigger update here was a comprehensive updates to stormwater requirements for state compliance, an edit to the bottle shop definition, a new definition for functional fire protection, an update to that tenorant merchant sales for aligning with the temporary use standards. We've now defined museum, and we've revised our secondary building, secondary structure, and secondary use definitions for clarity and consistency. So the, the next steps, we've taken it to the, the UDO's TA, next steps are really presented to you for the public hearing and following your direction, and any, I'm available if there are any questions for staff. We also have the engineering department, if you have questions about the stormwater compliance as well.
All right. Any questions for staff? All right. This has been noted as a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this, please step forward and state your name for the record. No one wishing to speak? I'll close the public hearing and turn it over to council.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to re-adopt Ordinance 2025-11-01 and consistency and reasonability statement. Thank you.
Second.
A motion and a second for the adoption of ordinance 2025-11-01 and the consistency and reasonableness statement. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Up next is the 2023-87 CZM West Second Street duplexes conditional rezoning.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Town Manager and Attorney. I'm Robert Tate, the senior planner with the town's planning department. Before you tonight is a conditional rezoning that was reviewed and submitted under the Unified Development Code, just as a reference or reminder, that is the previous development ordinance associated with the town. This is project number 2023-87 CZM for the West Second Street duplexes. This is a request to go from the residential high-density zoning district to the conditional residential zoning district. This property or this site is approximately .41 acres in size and located along West Second Street near the intersection of Atkinson Street. As you can see here, this is the location of the posted notice for this public hearing tonight, and, and you can also discern that this site is currently vacant and undeveloped. Taking another look at the posted notice. So here I have two maps for you. The first is the current zoning, showing where the residential high-density is located. The first is the current zoning showing where the residential high-density is located. And then also the surrounding zoning, which is predominantly residential. There is some commercial uses that are permitted along North Main Street on the north side. And then the bottom map is showing the proposed zoning going to that conditional residential district. So first I wanted to start here with the site plan, just to kind of give you an idea of what this request pertains. So you'll see here there are three new lots created, and on each lot will be a duplex structure. Each duplex will have two units, so across these three lots, there will be six units in total. Here you can also see the site improvements associated with this site plan. And I'll kind of go a little bit more detail in the next couple of slides just to give you perspective of what is contained on each lot. So this first lot is the westernmost lot that is near the intersection of Atkinson Drive. Here you can see the building layout, you can see the parking, and then around the edges you can see, if I can try this. There you go, around the edges you can see the landscape buffer. And I'll go into a little bit more detail with the zoning conditions. Wanted to quickly highlight that the parking associated for each duplex is in front of the building and contains two parking spaces for each unit. So you'll see four, excuse me, so you'll see four parking spaces on each lot. If you have any curiosity with the design of the parking lot, it's a little different than what you would commonly see. You can see here there's a kind of a teardrop right there separating the two individual driveways. That was a design choice to ensure that this driveway was compliant with the code. A driveway without the teardrop would be too wide and be in compliant with the code. So that's why that design was chose. Moving on to the second duplex, this is the middle lot, kind of similar to that westernmost lot. The only difference here, you'll see just that buffer on the rear. Same type of parking and driveway. And then really quickly, just wanted to also provide you with the building elevations just so you have a picture of what these structures will look like. So you can notice that there are no garages, so the parking spaces in front of the building is needed.
And is that vinyl siding, what is that?
So yeah, I can get into more details with that, but that would be vinyl siding, yes sir.
Like minimum requirement material?
So they have provided zoning conditions that would require them to use vinyl as a primary building material. And then this last lot, the third lot, one big thing I wanted to point out is that rather than a 10-foot buffer on this eastern lot line, as you've seen across the rest of the outermost sides of the property, there is going to be a 6-foot reduced buffer, but would contain the same amount of plantings in that buffer, just at a reduced buffer width. And then just showing the elevation for this third lot, that will be slightly different than the previous two. All right, so now I'm going to go over the zoning conditions. I have a handful for you. And you'll notice also that I'll only be talking about a few key conditions for your consideration. Those will be highlighted and read as you can see number 6 right here shown. So I'll go ahead and start with number 6. This would establish allowed uses on the site, which would only allow duplex structures, but would also allow any accessory residential structures as well. Condition number 7 speaks to the residential density that would be allowed on the site, across the entire site, no more than six units would be allowed, but at a rate at 15 units per acre. So for this site, that would be six units as shown on the site plan. The eighth condition establishes some development standards. Here the ninth condition speaks again to that perimeter, outermost landscape buffer, where there will be a 10-foot buffer around the outermost sides of the, of the property or the site. And also a privacy fence will also be provided in that buffer as well. Condition number 11, Mayor, this one's for you. This one speaks to the building materials, so they have proposed that vinyl would be the primary exterior building material on the site. Moving on, number 16 would require the applicant to confirm and record the three individual parcels that are shown on the site plan. Number 17 is somewhat of a continuation of condition number 9, which would reduce that buffer on the eastern lot line from 10 feet to 6 feet. And then the last condition here is another request from the applicant to be exempt from the site interior landscaping requirements in the UDC. So overall, after the technical review committee provided review of this request, it was determined that this request is consistent with the future land use map designation, which is downtown core. That designation encourages infill residential development, especially in areas like downtown, near projects with mixed-use developments. So planning board heard this item at their previous meeting in October and provided a recommendation of approval with conditions. The planning department has also provided a recommendation of approval, citing that it is consistent with the 2045 Comprehensive Growth Plan. So tonight you are considering this rezoning request. So any consideration for this request, the approval of this request would be tied and associated with the conditions of approval. So lastly here is your options, your motion options. And I am available for any questions you may have.
All right, any questions for staff? All right, thank you, sir. This has been noted as a public hearing. Anyone wish to speak on this item, please step forward and state your name for the record.
Good evening, Boyd Kirk Lane, through line surveying 205 West Main Street. Here to speak on behalf of the applicant. Staff has covered the ground very well, so I'll just answer any questions. There was one from the mayor.
I mean, it's not really a question, it's just that it's the minimum.
All right, so much like you, I would say this is my personal opinion. Vinyl siding is different than it was 20 years ago, much like vinyl flooring. An LBP is much different than it used to be. So there are two residential structures that are brand new, that are currently either just got finished or still under construction on Second Street, and they have the exact same vinyl board and batten. Look, one's white and one's tanish. That will be used on these structures as well. And they're permitted under construction or finished. That are two that Jeff Hasky built on Second Street.
Got you, any questions for that? All right, thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else? No one else wishing to speak, I'll close the public hearing and turn it over to the council. Ms. Archer?
I just had a comment, thank you for the presentation. And I was going to say kind of a pro and a con. On the pro side, I'm really happy to see some duplex product being proposed downtown, particularly, you know, in this area of town. You know, some people downtown, they like to have a house. Other people prefer an apartment. But there, I believe, is probably an underserved market out there who's looking for more of that condo duplex feel. And so I'm really glad that that's coming. The only kind of thing on my wish list, I've seen them done in some areas of the state where they have a little bit more architectural variation. But, you know, I think these are going to be a good product, and the landscaping will help kind of soften that flat look. And so I think it's a, it's a solid compromise, and those are all my comments, thank you.
Thank you, anyone else? Ms. Anderson? I'm always ready for a motion.
I'd like to make a motion for adoption of ordinance 2025-11-02. And consistency and reasonableness statement included.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the adoption of ordinance 2025-11-02 and the consistency and reasonableness statement. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion carries. And next is debt insurance, limited obligation bond series 2025.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Robert Mackay, Finance Director. Tonight we have two resolutions that we're asking council to adopt. The first one is the resolution that will authorize the town to issue limited obligation bonds series 2025 to Webster Bank in an amount not to exceed $21 million with a true interest cost of not greater than 5%. Here on the screen is the listing of the projects that will be used. There's a couple of renovation projects, the fire station one and library, which is currently undergoing renovation. We're also acquiring some land and some buildings that'll be used for town use, as well as some potential economic development and downtown investment. As you can see there, proposed bond right now is a little bit south of $20 million. And we can flip to the next page. You can see the terms here. It's a 20-year level principal at 4.38%. That rate was locked in a few months back, but it's still competitive with current market conditions with similar terms. And there it's showing you we got a 20-year level principal, which the LGC loves, and then our interest cost, so you can see that right there. The last page kind of gives you a layout. The LGC is scheduled to approve this at their December 2nd meeting. And then afterwards, we would be looking at closing with Webster Bank on December 11th. So that covers the actual first resolution. The second resolution is referred to often as a findings resolution, and that basically authorizes the town to make application with the LGC so they can approve the financing in conjunction with making certain statutory findings. Any questions?
Mr. Thames? Sorry, it's getting very time for a break.
You're fine, it is, it is. Just for my lack of the knowledge crowd that needs to be schooled on this, could you give a, pause, I was putting you on the spot, but a rough 101 on a limited obligation bond for me, please?
What?
Could you give a 101 just as?
Unlimited obligation bond?
Yes, sir.
It's a form of financing that falls underneath the statute 160D, similar to a financing, traditional installment financing. It's just, they call them a limited obligation bonds. So it's a form of a revenue, not a revenue, but a form of a bond. But it's very similar to a traditional installment financing. It's not GL bonds, we're not, we're not going out and doing general obligation bonds. So the, we play, we're doing a direct placement with Webster Bank on this. And obviously, I think I mentioned this at the council retreat, Webster Bank will be taking a security interest in several of these properties. The ones that we're buying, the buildings and the land, they'll take a security interest that is collateral for the loan.
Perfect, thank you.
Anyone else? All right, thank you. This has been noted as a public hearing. Anyone wish to speak on this, please step forward and state your name for the record. Okay, no one wishing to speak, I'll close the public hearing and turn it over to council for their discussion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion?
Ms. Archer?
Adoption of resolutions 2025-121 and 2025-122. Second.
We have a motion and a second for the adoption of resolution 2025-121 and 2025-122. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion carries. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, at this time I'm going to call for a 10-minute break.
Thanks, sir.
Sorry, I'm going to call our meeting back to order. The next item on the agenda is the budget amendments and capital project ordinances.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Robert Mackay, Finance Director. Tonight, we have eight budget amendments before council. Six of them are directly related to our capital program initiative. We are creating three separate capital reserve program initiative funds, one for the general fund, one for the water sewer, one for electric fund. Council, remember, back in fiscal 2024, we created the program initiative. It was built into the respective budgets, the general fund, water sewer, electric, and that still is the case today. What we're doing is, these funds were designed to carry over from year to year. So what we're doing now with these capital reserve funds is we're transferring over the unspent monies that the end of, as year-to-date through the end of June 30 of 2025, less any encumbrances that rolled over into the current fiscal year, we're going to transfer those unspent monies over to these respective capital reserve funds that we're creating for the program initiative. So again, we created one for capital program initiative for the electric, water sewer, general fund. And we got those capital project reserve ordinances created in here. And we've got three budget amendments where we're showing the transfer of those unspent monies from respective fund, general fund, water sewer, electric, over those capital reserve funds. The last two budget amendments are tied to water supply and distribution. We're creating a new capital reserve fund for water supply project. We had transferred earlier in 2025, before we closed out, we had transferred, we had $8 million in the budget for water capacity purchases. The county didn't have capacity to sell us. We took those monies, transferred it over to a different capital reserve fund. And now what we're doing by creating this separate capital reserve fund for the, specifically for water supply, we're transferring that money back out of that previous capital reserve fund, $8 million, over to the new capital project fund. So all these things are kind of related together. A lot of budget amendments, eight, but at the end of the day, this is really going to allow us, particularly with the program initiative, to manage this at a little more granular level, at an individual line level rather than trying to manage it from a holistic perspective. It's a bundle, pot of money. We're going to be able to track this by line, which is why we have, if you look at those individual capital program initiative budget ordinances, you're going to see multiple GL accounts in there. And that's going to allow us to keep track of these on a more detailed basis. And as those funds are needed in the future, if we need them, we'll transfer them back. But the program initiative is still going to stay budgeted each year within the respective general fund, water sewer, electric. The only way that money would come back in would be if we need it. We'll transfer it out of the reserve fund back over. Otherwise, those unspent monies just going to roll over every year. We'll just transfer them over to these capital project reserve funds, and they'll stay there till, kind of a holding tank until we actually need them.
Perfect. All right. Any questions or comments for staff? All right. Thank you, sir. Hearing none, I'll turn it over to council for their discussion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion.
Ms. Archer.
Adoption of ordinances 2025-11-07, 2025-11-08, 2025-11-12, 2025-11-13, 2025-11-14. Second.
We have a motion and a second for those stated, adoption of those stated ordinances. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm now open the floor for public comment. Anyone wish to speak, please step forward and state your name for the record.
Good evening. Thank you again. Diane Rothwell.
Yeah, I need to make sure we can all hear you.
Diane Rothwell. I reside at the Glen Laurel community. And I've resided there for the past 20 months. Lovely community. It took a lot of time for me to choose Clayton as my residence. I decided to rent first before I purchased because I wanted to make sure where I was going to find my forever home. But my concern, and I want to bring it to the front of council, is the treacherous Route 42. Most recently, there have been two serious accidents within the last week. And one was on Sunday. It was a two-car accident. And then just a few days later was an eight-car accident. The 20 months I've resided there, there have been as many accidents, 20, possibly 30, not visually experienced or witnessed what the cause was, just the aftermath of it. And also, a few times being caught in it on my way home from work. If we can take a look in taking different measures to try to alleviate, you know, that situation going on. I know on my way to work, I think it's Swift Creek Road by the airport, there's an alert several feet to the traffic light that the light's going to be changing. If that can be installed right there by McKenzie Ridge, because that seems to be where the accidents always happen. And just recently, the eight-car accident, I know that the one gentleman, he said, well, you know, there's traffic lights where they can be changed and to help the fire department to get through. That's fine on paper, and that's fine to address, you know, the mechanical issues, but you're dealing with people. People, I started to panic because there was a school bus in the right-hand turn lane only to go onto the Glen Laurel property. And then the two traffic lanes that were just bombarded with cars, and the two fire trucks couldn't get through. It took them, you know, when life is, you know, of the essence in minutes count, it's vital to have that access. And then also, now the road was completely shut down, and traffic was diverted onto the Glen Laurel, through the Glen Laurel community, where children live. People are walking their dogs and everything. That becomes also a hazard because quite a few people I see, you know, when they have to take a side road or something, they're not really sure. They start to panic a little bit. They want to get home. I know somewhere down the road on 42 is a school. They want to get to the school to pick up their children, or they've got to get to the, you know. There's a lot of variables that play into human nature and everything. So if the council can take a look and try to help alleviate these accidents that are happening specifically in that area, because it's, immediately I hear the crash and right away, 911, you know. It's, you know, scary. And myself, a few times I leave early in the morning. That seems to be because it's a kind of a straight thoroughfare. It's like the autobahn. I've been caught twice in a drag race with two cars speeding, going west from McKenzie Ridge to the Dunkin' Donuts, the Food Lion. And then they do that U-turn, and then they race back. If there could be a little bit more police presence in the early mornings, you know, I think would help alleviate that. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Anyone else? All right, no one else wishing to speak. I'll turn it over to, we'll start with staff reports, beginning with the manager.
Well, I appreciate the support for the lob that you guys approved here a short time ago. A lot of great projects that are combined within that. You know, the fire station one expansion with the Clayton High School project that's coming on. The look and feel of Fire Rescue Drive is really going to be changing here over the next couple of years. So really critical to go ahead and get that expansion done on that property now before all of that gets changed. The library, you guys had a great, we had a great retreat last Monday. Appreciate all the interaction as well as all the input from the staff. But we were able to at least walk the library. You can see how that project's coming together and really achieving a lot of the goals You know, some of the properties from the town, from the town offices, this facility has really treated us very well over the years. However, we are busting at the seams additionally on the, I guess, the Clayton Center side. There's some significant R and R work, particularly for the exterior of the building that needs to happen over the next couple of years, unfortunately, well, I shouldn't say unfortunately. When we did this side of the building, it was during COVID, so the disruption to overall operations was very minimal, because nobody was in the building. Unfortunately, we're not going to have that opportunity on that side of the building. So having some additional space to be able to relocate some of our departments to, some permanently, some temporarily, will be a big help in order to be able to move that project forward. Obviously, the recreation center that we talked about a few weeks ago with Clayton Fitness and acquiring that property for a future Parks and Rec facility was a big win for us. The warehouse property on Atkinson, that really advances what was a major capital project for us that was already in the top five, excuse me, in the next five years, in the top 10. Being able to go ahead and purchase that and move into it in advance of that Veterans Parkway expansion by NC DOT with that road. For those that may not be aware, when that road expansion occurs, the town's operations facility will be fairly significantly impacted. Our warehouse will lose its loading dock and circulation from a truck perspective to be able to utilize it, as well as fairly significant impacts to the parking lot out front, which we are already constrained on with the number of people there. So again, a lot of great projects in there, so looking forward to getting that over the goal line. And as Robert mentioned, locking in that rate with Webster Bank, so a few weeks back, months back, excuse me, is looking like it was a good move, because the rates are staying pretty much where we intended. So again, appreciate all the support on that. A lot of great work to come with it, so bear with us as we finalize all the moving of the different pieces around the chessboard as we purchase the properties and can stand them up for facilities. Last but certainly not least, I was going to ask Deputy Manager Courtney Tanner to come on up. I know she's been looking forward to having this conversation here. As many, some of you maybe be aware, Deputy Manager Courtney Tanner has decided after 20-plus years in local government to go ahead and hang up her hat and retire effectively December 1st. Want to take this opportunity to thank her for her service here at the Town of Clayton for the last year plus. Seems like she's been here a lot longer than that, especially with a lot of the great work that she was able to accomplish, helping us move forward with getting the UDO implemented and providing guidance on that. The Clarity Project, which is coming along very nicely, as well as just all the input on all things Town of Clayton. So I know you're looking forward to the next chapter, I'm sure, after a long time with local government, but I just want to say, both professionally and personally, thank you for all you've done for the town and myself over the years. We've had a lot of good competitive banter and discussion on planning versus engineering concepts over the years.
Planning still wins, I mean, by default.
I think I might actually have you outnumbered with engineers today, so.
I mean, AICP has more letters than PE, so.
One of us is recognized in the state statutes.
I have more degrees too. I mean, I could go down the list.
But all jokes aside, Courtney, thank you very much for everything that you've done for us. I did want to take an opportunity here to publicly recognize you and all the great work you've done, give you an opportunity to speak, as well as anybody here on the dais that may.
To take it back, we have the same number of degrees. When we started working, I had more degrees when you, when I first met you, but you earned another one along the way. Now, I want to say, it actually really wasn't an easy decision. I would say it's gotten colder in North Carolina, so partly I do like to travel a lot, so I'll probably be spending more time going places where it's warmer. But for those of you that were, had an opportunity to go to the annual employee lunch, and I'll kind of repeat part of what I said there, any employee that works here is pretty lucky. I've worked at a lot of different jurisdictions, and I'll be very clear, this is not lip service. This is straight from the heart. I'm not one, anybody who knows me well enough knows, I'm not going to say anything that's not going to be true.
We know.
Yeah. Not everybody knows that, but some of y'all do. Employee that's lucky enough to work here, they're given a gift. And there's a gift in lots of different ways. I think one of the gifts is the opportunity, one, just to work here is a gift. The opportunity to work with some of the leadership here, that is certainly a gift. The employees here, I have worked at some places that aren't that great place, that great to work. The people here are amazing, the people in this building, different buildings, they were warm and welcoming, and you're not going to get that in every government environment. It certainly felt like home. I certainly have made friends here, and that was amazing. So I think there's a lot of people here that a lot of people could have learned from, and that is a gift. Also, so the elected body was a gift here. Not every place you'll go to will be given the gift of good leadership and an elected body. Each and every single one of you, you know, allocates funding for staff, whether it's through COLA, whether it's through merit, not everybody gets that. And I don't think that employees sometimes realize that is a gift that you are given. You know, you can work really hard and be given a gift of nothing. You know, you just show, you're given the gift of showing up each and every single day and being said, "Thank you." You're not necessarily given a merit, regardless of how many hours you put in. You're given the gift of, you know, continuing education here. That's important. A lot of us do have certifications, and we're not having to pay for it out of our own pocket. I mean, to give you an idea, just my AICP does cost about $1,000 a year. That is just the cost of my certification. That's not my continuing education credits. And so to have an employer that's willing to fund that, that's important. Not everybody has that gift, and you do that across the board. And I think it's really important for people to understand that that is a gift. It's not something we're entitled to get, and we're really lucky. And so I really kind of impressed that, you know, to everybody that I work with, and so I want people to really understand that. So that I've been really thankful for. So it was definitely not an easy decision for me to leave. It really had nothing to do with the people of Clayton. And by the people, it's the business owners, the citizens and everything. It was a very personal, difficult decision as to why I am leaving. Yes, I am going to be traveling, because I am freezing cold here all the time in North Carolina now. Strange, I don't know why. I've never lived anywhere north, and I've never really been anywhere south. I'm just now freezing cold. You know, I am going to enjoy time with my kids as they get ready to go to college. So there's going to be a lot of personal things that I'm getting, going to be able to do, because I hit this years of service that I hit a lucky age, that you're afforded in North Carolina retirement system. I'm not going to be far. I've been very clear to Rich that I'm a phone call away, and I am more than happy to answer any questions that you have, and I'm happy to have lunch or whatever have you and answer those questions, because I don't live that far away. In some ways, I'm going to miss my long commute, because it was great music time with Courtney Time, and I value my personal time, so that part I'm going to miss too. So thank you. It has been a lovely time here. I'm going to miss it, and for anybody that has to come behind me, I am sorry, because I have really big feet, they're kind of flat and wide, and you're going to have fill issues. So, but thank you. Thank you for the gift of this employment here. It has been wonderful, and thank you.
Thank you for all you've done for the Town of Clayton. We are better because of you.
Thank you. That really means a lot, Mayor.
I just want to thank you for your, I'm grateful for a lot of things, and I'm grateful, first and foremost, for your expertise that you brought to our town. And it's been a pleasure to have conversations where we don't always agree, but you are, if you're anything, you're a consummate professional, and it's always good to hear your advice and what your experience is. Thank you, Courtney, for everything you've done for us.
Thank you.
Courtney, can I thank you enough for those words that you just said about the Town of Clayton, the, our government, the council. I think things like that need to be known. I have enjoyed, you and I have worked on certain little projects together, so I have had the enjoyment in working with you from your position personally. And last but not least, I'm going to tell everybody why you're actually leaving December 1st, because my last day is December 1st. That's the true reason that you're leaving.
Truth be told.
Mr. Casey. Yeah, Ms. Williams.
I just want to say, I wish you the best, and you are certainly right. I've often said, this is a great place to work, and the town treats the employees just awesome. And I just wanted to say to you, do whatever you want to do to make you happy and stay warm. I wish you the best. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to say, thank you. You've definitely brought a lot of knowledge and experience to the town. You've had to tackle some pretty challenging situations, and thank you for doing that. I'm jealous you're retiring. I wish I could retire too. And also, could you just give us your cell phone number, so we can call you anytime?
Not on public record. Nice try.
Just kidding, no. Seriously, you're going to be missed. You've always been a pleasure to work with, you know, you set the record straight sometimes when it needed to be, and, you know, you knew how to have fun as well, and fun needs to be had, and we need to have fun in this position.
And I'm still going to compete with you with my number of baseball caps. I did pick one up in Bahamas, actually, the other weekend, so. I just don't wear them here. See, I'm going to be able to wear them now in retirement.
Yeah, game on. Got one right here.
Thank you, Courtney, and I want you to know, most Clayton residents don't know how hard you have worked here, but those of us sitting up here have seen it, and I'm just truly grateful. And you were supposed to wait for four more years, so I'm not really sure where the confusion happened there. And we wish you the best, and you've got so much more to give. I think after you warm up, you're going to find something that can use your talents. So take care.
Yeah, I think I have like seven more days to continue setting the alarm off in this building, because I set it off 70 days a week. Eventually, I figured somebody was going to figure out where my car was at this point. I was like, I've been here long enough that they'd stopped setting the alarm on me in this building. They haven't. It happens. But thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Attorney? Town Clerk?
No report.
Any other staff? All right. Now I'll turn it over to council for comments.
I have one, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Archer.
So I know some of us have already talked about this, but, you know, campaign season has finally wound down, and based on some feedback that I have gotten from the community during the campaign season and conversations I've had with the folks sitting up here, I would like to recommend tonight for staff to investigate streaming or recording, something along those lines, our work sessions. So I believe we have consensus for that up here, but I guess what I'm looking for tonight is a nod to go ahead and advise staff to take that on.
I think that's a nice.
Absolutely. Yep. All right. Full consent.
All right, yeah, we'll definitely take that. I know, Nathaniel, we've been looking into that, different options, whether it be upstairs in the Rotary or down here, from a production perspective, moving the work sessions down here would likely be the most advantageous in order to be able to do that. So we'll go ahead and start working out logistics and see if we can get that all pulled together by, December 1st is the next one.
Not to make this meeting last any longer, because I know that's important, but I just want to say what a great joy it was to tour the library and see what they had done with that space. It felt like it was twice as big as it was before. It was truly exciting, and I can't wait for the public to be able to see this and really enjoy the new library space. And congratulations to everybody who's worked so hard on this project and have brought it in on time, actually under time, I think. So congratulations, and I can't wait for the community to enjoy this, our new library space. Reconfigured library, prairie space. Good job.
Mr. Casey.
I just, I'm glad that Councilwoman Archer made the recommendation to livestream the work sessions. We had a former council member reach out and was very interested in that happening, and I know, I'm glad we got consensus on that. So that was kind of one serious thing, because that was on my agenda, too. Two other things, a fun note, first off, the Clayton Comets play their second and last home game of the season this Friday at 6 o'clock, I'm sorry, 7 o'clock, they play DH Conley. If they win this Friday, they get the rematch of Cleveland again, but it'll be at Cleveland's home, Cleveland will have home advantage versus the Comets. But please come out to that. And then, secondly, me and my wife, as you all may know, are heavily involved in the Civitan. Well, the Civitan football team, the Mighty Mites, won their Super Bowl champion this past Saturday. We went to the West Johnson High School, huge turnout from a lot of the citizens in the community and the surrounding community cheering the Comets on, and they won pretty handily over the Wendell Rams. So that's all.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else? Since there are no further comments, then I will entertain a motion to go into closed session for, one, a legal matter, for, two, an economic development matter, and for, three, discussion of real property.
Motion going to closed session.
If I could revise the motion to include a personnel matter, is that also?
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed that. I don't have my glasses.
That's fine.
And a personnel matter. Thank you for clarification.
All right. Make that motion again.
And I will second.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Please clear the room.
Is there any other business to come before this council? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Good night.